It is 6:07 PM and I'll call the council meeting to order. Today is May 17th and it is, as I said, 6:07. Our first item on the agenda is roll call or call to order and everybody is present and present in the council chambers. Next item is pledge of allegiance and silent prayer in lieu of invocation. If everybody could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the free and republic of which we are, one nation, under God, indivisible, and everlasting.
Our next item on our agenda is ceremonial oath of office. The first one would be in the badge pitting. The first one would be Fire Chief Todd Ekus.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Todd Ekus.
I, Todd Ekus.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as chief.
To serve as chief.
Of the fire department.
Of the fire department.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Michael S. Pataki.
I, Michael S. Pataki.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as interim chief.
To serve as interim chief.
Of the police department.
Of the police department.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We have a son Cody who is a Portage County deputy and Mike's father Stan was the Portage And now we have interim deputy chief Scott Dewitt.
All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Scott Dewitt.
I, Scott Dewitt.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as interim deputy chief.
To serve as interim deputy chief.
Of the police department.
Of the police department.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
If you want to sneak out at this time would be the right time. previous meetings held April 14th and April 19th. See attachments one and two in your packet. We have a motion by Dean and a second by Ryan. Is there any further discussion on this item? That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. We're moving on to item six with a, which is a presentation by Jerry Bach regarding a petition from residents regarding the cleanup of Northern Steel Casting property. And I do not see Jerry here. Mike? Are you in his stead or? This is Mike Hittner.
Mike Hittner here, Mayor Blazer, members of the common council, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not here in Jerry's stead. I signed the petition, but we all know what that eyesore looks like. And my understanding, they haven't paid taxes since 2019 and I don't know how industrial condemnation works, but in most areas, if there's a significant fire, if it be a retail establishment, they'd have to be on it within a year or so, either to rebuild or to tear it down. So I think we got a $27 million YMCA there. We got a nice boys and girls club. It's an eyesore in the community. You got some nice housing there. I think it's time for the city to do some work. Now certainly there's going to be, have to be remediation there. Now, we also know that was a county garage at one time, so there's pollution from the county there and pollution certainly from Northern Steel Casting. So I would hope that the common council with the mayor's help would move this forward so that this project is completed and we can use that property for a proper purpose. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mike. What we'll do is just have this as a referral then to finance and property. Would it be? Okay. Sounds good. I saw Jerry today, so I'm surprised he, unless he's thinking it starts at seven. Item number seven then is consider for confirmation Mayor Blazer's appointments to various committees, commissioners, boards. See attachment three. The motion by Ryan, second by Matt. Is there any further discussion? Tyler, Dean's button's not working. There we go. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. We're on item eight, consider for adoption the action of the plan commission at its meeting held on May 2nd. I can read it too if you want. You seem to be better at abbreviating it.
That's up to you, mayor. I just happened to pull it open, so I am ready to go here. The plan commission met at 4:00 PM on May 2nd, 2022 in the Wisconsin Rapids Council Chambers and via remote audio conferencing. Members present are on a list in our office, but there was a quorum of plan commissioners in attendance. The meeting was called to order at 4:02 PM. Item one was approval of the report from the April 18th, 2022 Plan Commission meeting. Motion by Goodrow to approve the reports from the April 18th Plan Commission meeting. Second by Daven, motion carried six, zero. Item two was an update regarding the Van De Waal and Associates Wisconsin Rapids Recovery and Redevelopment Plan. Director Kearns provided a brief update regarding the upcoming planning charrette for Plan Commission and Common Council as well as the public visioning workshop, which is scheduled for June 1st at the McMillan Library. Item three is the election of a vice chairperson. Motion by Goodrow to nominate Ryan Austin as vice chairperson for the Plan Commission. Second by Fith, Mr. Austin, Austin accepted the nomination. No members were opposed. Motion by Blazer to appoint Ryan Austin as vice chairperson for the Plan Commission. Second by Tao, motion carried six, zero. Item four, Julie Gesert requests to, for a certified survey map to create two outlots which are under five acres within the town of Grand Rapids. The subject property is at 2840 Saratoga Street, parcel ID listed. Mr. Kearns clarified that the city has extraterritorial control for subdivision plat review, but not for zoning and further summarized the request. Motion by Daven to approve the request as presented for a certified survey map to create two outlots which are under five acres within the town of Grand Rapids. Subject was previously identified. Second by Austin, motion carried six, zero. Item five, Happy Hippo Construction LLC requests for a certified survey map to create two outlots at 2211 8th Street South and dedicate right of way on 8th Street South, Goodnow Avenue and 10th Street South. Director Kearns provided an analysis and summary of the request. Larry Koopman of Lamperton Lee spoke about concerns regarding lot lines. There was a motion by Goodrow to approve the request, a second by Blazer. The motion carried six, zero. Item six, Dan Gunstein requests for site plan review to construct, construct a car wash at 4128th Street South. Associate planner Edmondson provided a summary of the item. Chairperson Blazer and other commissioners also discussed specifics on the request and there was a motion by Austin with a second by Goodrow to approve the request with eight conditions as outlined in the staff report. There was an added condition to this one that was not in the staff report, I believe, that's regarding the site plan and one-way ingress on the easternmost driveway of Dove Avenue and that shall be eliminated, subject to review. Or it should include, it should be one-way or eliminated, subject to review from the department and the engineering department. That motion carried six, zero. Item number seven was Anderson's Bulk Fuel Storage. Public hearing in action on a request for a conditional use permit to construct bulk fuel storage tanks at 4,000 Commerce Drive. Again, staff summarized the request. Public hearing opened at 4:33 PM. Speaking against is a list of individuals on file in our office. Speaking in favor, none. The public hearing closed at 4:35. The applicant with the Andersons discussed with the commission some specifics on the request, to which both the commission and staff engaged in further conversation. There eventually was a motion by Daven to approve the request with the four conditions outlined in the staff report and a second by Goodrow. That motion carried six, zero. Item number eight, Mario Dickens, public hearing in action on a request for a conditional use permit to operate truck trailer rental establishment at 711 East Grand Avenue. Staff summarized the request. The public hearing opened at 4:49 PM. Again, we've got a list of those speaking against in our office. Speaking in favor, none. The public hearing closed at 4:51 PM. Again, there was additional conversation from staff, the applicant and the commission regarding specifics of the request and the site, in particular, the driveway or driveways and the placement of the trucks and trailers onsite. There was a motion by Austin, second by Goodrow to approve the request, subject to the eight conditions outlined in the staff report. That motion was carried six, zero. Item number nine was a request by the community development department to amend and a public hearing to amend Chapter 11 of the zoning ordinance, specifically Appendix B 5.04 Overnight Lodging, to permit the permanent residence of an onsite manager as an accessory use within a dwelling unit. Staff summarized the request. There was a public hearing at 5:11 PM. Speaking against or in favor were none. And there was an eventual motion by Commissioner Tao and a second by Daven to approve the request and that motion carried six, zero. Finally, item number 10 was adjournment. Motion by Austin to adjourn, second by Goodrow. Motion carried six, zero. The meeting was adjourned at 5:13 PM and I submit that for your approval. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Ryan and seconded by Sherry. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, please cast. Oh, hold on, Mr. O.
Ah, let's see, number, what is it, six?
That's Kyle.
Is there, Kyle, is there, you sure there's enough ingress, egress, whatever there for that car wash on 8th Street there?
In terms of the.
Enough for the, so there won't be a backup of cars or anything?
Yeah, in terms of the added condition regarding the easternmost driveway on Dove, I think if that shrunk to a one-way, they would have the required separation from the intersection.
Okay, that's a.
Yep. So it's either, it's either that or the elimination of the 8th Street drive into the property and they've, I think, elected at this point to make the second driveway on Dove a one-way.
Kyle, is there an ordinance for the, which one was that? The overnight lodging? Number nine.
Yes, I believe there should have been. I don't have the packet open, only the agenda.
Yeah, it's not in the packet.
Yeah, there was an ordinance drafted. I apologize if it maybe wasn't attached to the email to the clerk. If you want, I can certainly, if you hold it out, I can go print copies of the ordinance and provide it to the commission or to the, to the council, sorry.
Actually, we'll have to hold that, we'll have to hold it over till the next meeting.
Yes, I do have the ordinance in ordinance form. Would you like me to print copies?
Go ahead, Tom.
I knew there was one more, I think. On that number eight, Kyle, the, um, truck trailer rental establishment on East Grand. As I was reading through it and it had, had some, there was a, I guess a speaker against it, but it has a rental establishment for truck trailers, but then as I kept reading, it says they expressed concerns about signage, layout of map, vehicle sales. Is any of that to take place on there? Is this a truck or just rentals, just rentals? Because it had the inherent vehicle sales and it just raised an eye, opened my eyes when I read that.
Yeah, so the conditional use is only for the truck trailer rental establishment. The owner, the business owner and property owner, one and the same, have identified additional uses that they want to operate onsite, one of which is a, like a print shop, like Xerox printing type shop, a potential car sales lot, as well as, I think, another one or two retail type uses. And those are permitted within that zoning district. So from a review standpoint, there isn't, within existing building, there isn't a plan commission, site plan approval or a conditional use required. However, they would still need to meet the parking requirements for those uses. So at some point, I would think as those uses start to become established, they might reach a tipping point where they just can't accommodate enough of the required parking onsite to do all of the uses. But I don't necessarily have a timeline of when they want to establish those uses. I think most important to them is the truck trailer rental and the printing business. And then, you know, over time, if, if it allows, they, they want to pursue other uses permitted within the code.
And I, I guess I haven't paid attention that close lately, but the parking lot itself, I think, needed some repaving probably to be able to mark parking lines and that, if my memory is right, anyway. Are they going to be doing that? Because I think in here it had about that they'd have to be marking the parking place spots and that, so is it gonna, is the paving going to be done enough or so that they'll be able to mark it?
Yeah, so one, one of the conditions is that they provide an updated site plan to our office so we can confirm that the patron parking and the truck trailer parking are separate and that they can meet those required standards for size of parking stalls. But also, one of the conditions was that they do stripe the lot, so they need to provide the pavement markings for those parking stalls. With existing pavement, however, unless they're renovating it or doing a full reconstruct, they don't necessarily have to meet the setbacks or the landscaping requirements until such time that they pursue that reconstruction.
Kyle, could you kind of explain the ordinance that was handed out? I guess, yeah.
Yeah, so the ordinance that's handed out, again, my apologies that it was not in the packet. It was drafted prior and the intent was that it was part of the, the council packet. But essentially, it, it permits the creation of a permanent residence at an overnight lodging establishment. So if you've got a, an existing hotel, you could create a permanent dwelling unit under the code if this amendment is approved. And I think it's, for us, I think, from a zoning and a land use standpoint, it's not going to necessarily increase the intensity of the use, but I think we find that there's a, there's a desire for like an onsite manager who's operating the hotel to be able to reside onsite, to provide the, you know, the 24/7 care perhaps that the, the hotel needs. And right now, you can't do that legally as, in the zoning code or most of the time, if it's happening, it's happening in existing hotel room, which doesn't have a second exit, it doesn't have proper firewall separation. So there are a lot of code issues, building code issues that exist with this. So I don't think that if the ordinance is approved, that every hotel in the city is going to now put an addition on, create separation for a separate dwelling unit under the code. But I think there might be some interest. I know one in particular where previously there were building permits that were issued to operate such use and I do feel it is, it is fitting and appropriate within the community to, to permit such use as well.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, seeing none? That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. We're moving to item number nine, which is consider for adoption, action of the standing committees of the common council. The first one is Finance and Property Committee meeting held May 3rd. Matt?
Thank you. The Finance and Property Committee met at 5:06 PM on Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022 in the council chambers at City Hall. The meeting was live on Wisconsin Rapids Community Media, Spectrum Channel 985 and Solaris Channel 3, online at www wr-cm.org or via WR CM's Roku app and will stream live on the city of Wisconsin Rapids Facebook page. All members of the Finance and Property Committee were present, also in attendance were all the persons, Plack, SuShil, Kyle Kearns, Mayor Blazer, Paul Waller, Tyler Mickelson, Jennifer Gosick and Tim DeSorcy. A list of others in attendance is on file in the clerk's office. Item one, call to order, chairperson Zachary called the meeting to order at 5:06 PM. Item two, initial review of alcohol license renewals. The committee conducted initial review of the alcohol license renewals. No action was taken. Item three, consider request from Gordy's Pub and Grill LLC, doing business as Gordy's Pub and Grill. Adam P. Hoffa, agent for retail Class B fermented malt beverages and Class B intoxicating liquor licenses for the premises located at 2962 State Highway 73 South. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Venement to approve. Motion carried three to zero. Item number four, consider request from GPW LLC, doing business as Work. Alan G. Orzella, agent for class retail, for retail Class B fermented malt beverages and Class B intoxicating liquor licenses for the premises located at 212 West Grand Avenue. It was moved by Venement, seconded by Bemke to approve. Motion carried three to zero. Item number five, consider a request from Wisconsin Rapids Ranger Baseball, Inc., doing business as Wisconsin Rapids Ranger Baseball. Christina L. Suring, agent for a six-month retail Class B fermented malt beverages license for the premises located at 1801 16th Street South. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Venement to, to approve. Motion carried three to zero. Item number six, consider for approval, the appointment of Christine Engelhardt as successor agent for the retail Class A fermented malt beverages and Class A intoxicating liquor licenses for Dolgan Corp. LLC, doing business as Dollar General Store, number 21068 for the premises located at 820 8th Street South. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Venement to approve. Motion carried three to zero. Item number seven, consider for approval, the appointment of Christine Engelhardt as successor agent for the retail Class A fermented malt beverages and Class A intoxicating liquor licenses for Dolgan Corp. LLC, doing business at Dollar General Store, number 10309 for the premises located at 951 West Grand Avenue. It was moved by Venement, seconded by Bemke to approve. Motion carried three to zero. Item number eight, consider for approval, the temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverages license for Central Wisconsin Cultural Center, 2651 8th Street South for live music on the patio event to be held on Friday, May 20th, 2022, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Venement to approve. Motion carried three to zero. Item number nine, consider for approval, the temporary. Item number nine, consider for approval the temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverage license for Central Wisconsin Cultural Center located at 2651 8th Street South for an open-mic event to be held Friday, May 27th, 2022, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. It was moved by Venement, seconded by Bemke to approve. Motion carried three to zero. Item number 10, consider for approval the temporary retail class, retail Class B fermented malt beverages license for Central Wisconsin Cultural Center located at 2651 8th Street South for an open-mic event to be held on Friday, June 24th, 2022, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. It was moved by Venement, seconded by Bemke to approve. Motion carried three to zero. Consider a special, sorry, item number 11, consider a special event application from Central Wisconsin BMX Club, Inc., including requests for closure of the Eastside Compost Site on Saturday, July 30th, 2022, and use of Compost Site property for excess parking during the event. For Badger State three-day national event to be held Friday, July 29th through Sunday, July 31st, 2022, at the BMX facility at 2220 East Riverview Expressway. It was moved by Venement, seconded by Bemke to approve, and also to include that if this type of event is proposed in the future, the clerk may approve it and it will not be necessary for committee to approve the closing of the compost site. Motion carried three to zero. Item number 12, consider Phase Two of the Wayfinding Sign Project with Graphic House for fabrication and install. It was moved by Bemke and seconded by Venement to approve Phase Two of the Wayfinding Sign Project, specifically the second lesser Graphic House bid for fabrication and install, including parked signs LX-1 numbers 22A, 25, and 34A, and not to exceed project cost of $30,000. Motion carried three to zero. Item 13, consider for approval an agreement with Advanced Disposal Services Cranberry Creek Landfill LLC for the solid waste disposal services. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Venement to approve. An agreement with Advanced Disposal Services Cranberry Creek Landfill LLC for solid waste disposal services. Motion carried three to zero. Item 14, consider for approval an agreement with Spielberg Fireworks Company, Inc., display operator, Sky Painter Fireworks LLC, for the city's 2022 Fourth of July fireworks display. It was moved by Venement, seconded by Zacher to approve. Motion carried three to zero. Item 15, review and update grant management policy. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Venement to approve the updated grant management policy. Motion carried three to zero. Item 16, discussion regarding creating a comprehensive capital improvement program. The committee discussed creating a comprehensive capital improvements program. No action was taken. Item 17, review American Rescue Plan Act grant fund request. Committee reviewed American Rescue Plan grant fund request. No action was taken. Item 18, audit of the bills. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Venement to approve. Checks number 12432 to 12767. Motion carried three to zero. Item 19, set next meeting date. The next regular committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 7th, 2022, at 5:00 PM. Item 20, it was moved by Venement, seconded by Zacher to adjourn. Motion carried three to zero. The meeting adjourned at 6:14 PM.
I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
We have Sherry. Did you want to hold out an item?
Yes.
Okay. Which one?
I just wanted to comment on number 12.
Okay. Do you want it held out for a separate vote or?
No, I just wanted to discuss it. That's fine.
Okay. So we have a motion by Matt. Is there a second? But are you making a motion?
Now I'm making a motion to approve the minutes.
I beat you to it.
Ryan beat you. All right, we have a motion by Ryan, seconded by Jay. Sherry.
Thank you. Around the community, I think the signs look really nice. The cost, I guess, I wasn't quite aware of that. I know I voted for it in last June when I was new and wasn't really completely 100% certain. I know the first phase, I believe, was tax, room tax dollars. Is that correct? Okay.
Same with the next phase too, or this phase.
Right. And were we just expecting, I guess, that that's how Phase One, Two, and Three were all going to be supported? Because there is a Stage Three as well, correct?
No, Stage Two is it. And we've substantially reduced what Phase Two looks like, just because the costs are substantial, if we were to continue with exactly what was planned by Corbin, the sign designer.
Okay. Are they solar powered?
No, they are not. But there is the capability in the future to install some solar, small solar panels with downlighting. We passed on that initially because it would add about $12,000 to the 83, $82,000 project already. But if, and we've gotten some feedback from citizens that it would be nice, especially the downtown ones, if they had some downlighting at night. So we could always come back and install those.
And that's where, I guess, I was going with that. I mean, we spent a lot of money on those signs and they are beautiful. But in the evening hours, I mean, they're not helpful because, I mean, you have your phone, but still, it would be very nice if there was some lighting, solar power. I think that would be nice. If the signs, when I touched them and looked at them, I mean, they're it, you know? So if anything were to move, or a parking lot wasn't pre-parking anymore, or anything like that, what is the approximate cost per sign that we would have to pay to redo that sign, or if it was vandalized, or anything like that?
So we do have a warranty on the signs. It's a year warranty for basically anything that happens, you know, aside from citizen vandalizing the sign or something like that. I think it depends on the sign. There was a substantial difference from $400 for an on-street bike sign to $6,000-plus for one of the pedestrian kiosks. So, you know, they could be substantial if there's something wrong with them, or it could be very minimal, again, depending on the fix.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further questions or comments on? Oh, go ahead, Matt.
Just curious, since it was brought up, is there any way to get insurance on something like that or no?
That I am not sure. I think I could.
It's insured through our state insurance.
Yeah, we just have to, we'll list them with our insurance company, and they'd consider property out in the open, and I think the deductible on that is $2,500.
Thank you, Tim. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Congratulations on your licenses. All right. Move on to item number B, Public Works Committee meeting held on May 5th. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works Committee met on Thursday, May 5th, 2022, in the council chambers at City Hall and via remote video conference. Myself, Sherry Evanson, and Dennis Pollak were in attendance. Others attending are listed below. Item number one, call the meeting to order. The meeting was called to order at 5:01 PM. Item two, review engineering and street department monthly activity report. The report was reviewed. Item three, consider resolution to address preliminary resolutions and pending assessments. Motion by Evanson, seconded by Pollak, to approve the resolution revoking prior preliminary resolutions and special assessments. Action. Motion carried three, zero. Item four, review and consider preliminary resolutions for public improvements on the following streets. A, Oak Street, from East Jackson Street to 16th Street North, proposed in 2023. B, Shorewood Terrace, from First Street North to South Dead End, proposed in 2023. C, Apricot Street, from Broadway Street to 11th Street North, and from Broadway Street, from Franklin to Apricot Street, proposed in 2023. And D, 9th Street South, Chestnut Street to P Street, proposed in 2023. Motion by Evanson, seconded by Pollak, to approve the preliminary resolutions for public improvements as presented. Motion carried three, zero. Item five, review parking ordinance change on 4th Street South, the west side, from East Grand Ave to Oak Street. Motion by Austin, seconded by Evanson, to approve two-hour parking restrictions on both sides of 4th Street South, between East Grand Ave and Oak Street, between 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Motion carried three, zero. Item six, review parking ordinance change on 7th Street North, the east side, from Wisconsin Street to Baker Street. Motion by Austin, seconded by Pollak, to approve. Removing ordinance 27.13 IA-19N, no parking. 7th Street North, the east side, from Wisconsin Street and Baker Street. Motion carried three, zero. Item seven, review parking ordinance change on 14th Ave, South, the west side, between Alton Street and Chase Street. Motion by Austin, seconded by Evanson, to approve. Removing ordinance 27.131C17, no parking stopping or standing. On 14th Ave, South, the west side, between Alton Street and Chase Street, from May 1 to September 1, except Sunday, between 6:00 AM and noon. Motion carried three, zero. Review the draft request for proposals, sorry, item eight, review the draft request for proposals for the rail feasibility study to address noise and vehicle delays. Motion by Evanson, seconded by Pollak, to approve the draft request for proposals for alternatives to vehicle delays and rail usage. Motion carried three, zero. Item nine, review the referral list. There was no items to update, and item 10 was adjournment. And with that, I submit the Public Works report to council for approval.
Thank you. We need to hold out, was it five, six, and seven? Or? Or? Okay. They can approve. Okay. Okay. So, yeah, we don't have ordinances attached, so we'll have to bring back the ordinances next month to be approved. So you can vote on the whole report, unless somebody needs something held out. Okay. So a motion, was it a motion by Ryan? A motion by Jay, seconded by Dean. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Move on to item C, Human Resource Committee meeting held May 10th. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Human Resource Committee met on Tuesday, May 10th, at 2:00 PM. All members were present. A list of others is on file in the clerk's office. Meeting was called to order at 2:22. Item number two, discuss and consider for approval the commercial drivers license policy. There is an attachment. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Raome, to approve the commercial drivers license policy as presented. Motion carried three to zero. Item number three, discuss and consider for approval a seasonal gardener position with the park and rec department. There was a motion by Raome, seconded by Bemke, to approve the seasonal gardener position within the parks and recreation department. Motion carried two to zero with one abstention. Item number four, discuss and consider for approval an IT intern with the information and technology department. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Raome, to approve the IT intern with the information and technology department at the rate of $15 per hour. Motion carried three to zero. Item number five, discuss and consider for approval the renewal of employee health insurance with Aspiris Health Plan, effective July 1st, 2022. There was a motion by Bemke, seconded by Raome, to approve as presented. A, the renewal of a contract for employee health insurance with Aspiris Health Plan, effective July 1st, 2022. B, the renewal of an administrative dental plan with Delta Dental, effective July 1st, 2022. C, PPO and premier options on the dental plan. And D, the addition of checkup plus on the dental plan so that diagnostic and preventive dental services defined in the plan would not be applied to the individual annual maximum. Motion carried three to zero. Item number six, discuss and consider for approval employee health and dental insurance rates, effective July 1st, 2022. There was a motion by Raome, seconded by Delaney, to approve the health, employee health and dental rates as presented, effective July 1st, 2022. Health insurance premium rates will be reduced by 3.4% and dental premium rates will remain the same. Motion carried three to zero. Item number eight, the committee may go into closed session under section 19851E, Wisconsin Stats, which reads, deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. There was a motion by Raome, seconded by Bemke, to go into closed session. A roll call vote was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. Motion carried three, zero. In closed session, the committee discussed WRPPA's recent non-ratification of the city's tentative agreement with WRPPA and discussed negotiation strategy. Item number eight was adjournment. Motion by Raome, seconded by Bemke, to adjourn. Motion carried three, zero. Meeting adjourned in closed session at 3:15 PM. And with that, I'll submit for the adoption of the Human Resource Committee report.
So let's, Patrick first?
I'd just like to hold out three for the time being.
Okay. And Sherry?
I was going to hold out three as well.
Okay. And was that a motion, Jay?
Yes, please.
A motion by Jay. Button. Let somebody beat you. A motion by Matt, seconded by Jay. Item three, Patrick.
I just wanted to hold it out for this second vote. I'll let Sherry talk if she wants to.
Okay. Sherry?
Thank you. I did look at the packet. I wasn't able to review or view the meeting that took place, but I know I was looking through the job description. I was just kind of, I guess, confused of why we need this position. I thought that the Parks and Buildings Superintendent, their staff took care of this. I don't see Jake here to ask.
Go ahead. Did you, were you going to say something? Or can you respond?
I guess what's happened over the years is there was a group of gardeners that took care of it, and the gardeners are slowly but surely leaving us. So this was not part of the seasonal staff's regular duties. So they're asking for these two-part-time additional positions just for the zoo, if I understand it correctly.
That's the way I understand it also.
Okay, because I kind of heard about that, but I don't see that it was reflected in here. It just talks about the beauty of plants, outdoor grounds, and trees in a garden, designing, producing, renewing, and preserving outdoor spaces. Gardeners can work in local parks and city-owned landscape areas. So I guess I was just, you know, trees, trimming trees, hedges, light machinery. So I, I just, I mean, I know the master gardeners took care of, I know years ago, they used to plant the flowers along the riverbank by the bell tower and used to take care of all those things. But this seems just a little bit more in-depth than just planting the flowers. So I guess, do we not have park staff to do this any longer?
Ryan, can you speak to this? It, my understanding is just the zoo, because they cannot, there's such a vast amount of plantings there that the park staff can't keep up with that. And so Ryan could probably speak to it better. Was that? And so they haven't been attended for, I think, the last two years now, since the master gardener stopped maintaining the zoo, and it's kind of getting out of control. And so that's the plan was, I think there's two part-time ladies potentially that will maintain and hopefully get the zoo in order with the plantings. maintain and hopefully get the zoo in order with the plantings.
And so, getting back to my question, I know the master gardeners took care of some of the flowers and that kind of stuff, but the Parks Department took care of the trees and those kinds of things. So now all of a sudden, there's no, there's no staff to do that?
Well, the staff will continue to take, take care of trees, because we have arborists in the city that maintain trees. My understanding that these would only be for flowers and working in the zoo.
Okay, I guess I would just, I'd rather have the job description state that, because it says trimming trees, new trees. To me, those are things that I would think that the Parks Department would take care of, and I wish, I wish the superintendent was here so I could ask him directly. It's not that I don't like this, I just wish that it would specify if it is just for the zoo, then it was just for the zoo, and it didn't have all the stuff that I think that the grounds crew for the Parks Department would do. But that's, thank you.
Any further questions or comments on the item? Oh, Tom? Go ahead.
So is it, does this just have to do with the zoo, then?
Ryan, that's my understanding, correct?
I mean, that was mine.
The right.
I was getting somewhat confused, so that was my understanding.
My understanding is the zoo, is there anything up at the aquatics with all those plantings there?
The only thing that was talked about that I recollect was, was the zoo.
Was the zoo.
And how it looked in the condition that it was and bringing it back to life or whatever the looks of it.
Right. And then the money would come from the existing budget, so there's no increase to the budget. Jay?
I believe there's a gentleman in the audience that would like to speak to the issue. Yes?
Ray, come to the mic. Make sure the green button's on.
Regarding zoo, or is this master gardeners we're still talking about? Okay.
Master gardeners not at the zoo anymore.
Not at the zoo, okay. So talking to residents that were at the farmer's market and a couple of things that were going on at the time with the hundred year, it seemed, I was tracking the master gardeners at the time and the fact that they've moved on, but there's a couple of people in place that just don't have any leadership, but they're very good at planting. And then there's some, I identified a couple of Amish families that are interested in helping a little bit. So I've got those names and cards that I could get, I just didn't know where to get those too. And then with the zoo, it's, they were working on the armory barracks at one point, and they're trying to get somebody with a Bronze Star to organize a little bit more over there. And I don't know if that's part of the armory or not, but you might find a volunteer there. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Ray.
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion? Oh, I did that backwards. So we need to vote on the balance of the report, which is what the motion and the second's for. So vote everything besides number three. But please cast your ballots. Out of practice. That, so the balance of the report, that motion carried eight As, zero Nays. Now regarding item number three, what are your wishes? A motion by Jay, and seconded by Matt. Is there any further discussion?
I guess the only thing is, is the gentleman that was just speaking, if he has a list of volunteers, I'm sure there's plenty of work, if not at the zoo.
I can connect them with Jake.
He'll get those to Jake.
Yeah, I can connect Ray with Jake.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Sherry.
I just, like I said, I, I just wish that the, the job description was appropriate, because nowhere in there does it say just the zoo. And if we're making a job, even, I mean, I know it's not a substantial job year-round, but I wish that it reflected what was talked about tonight, so I won't be voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Tom.
To address that situ, Sherry's concern, can we, can we address that? I mean.
Or do you want to hold it over for Jake to take, to, to speak to it? Or, I don't know what the majority of you want to do here.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Jay.
Can we just, as Tom suggested, amend it so it is specifically for the zoo? It's, we're into May already. By the time we get people on board and at the zoo, we could have a mass over there. So if it could be amended, Sue?
It could. I mean, I guess I'm thinking, but do you, I mean, what if you want them to work in other areas? I think primarily they can be zoo, but what if, or, or, you know, I guess if you just want them anywhere else, that's, that's fine. We could add it somewhere in the, the job description that this will be
Primarily.
For zoo, for zoo only, or primarily at the zoo, however you wish to do it. But you can certainly amend.
Does this have to be unanimous?
I can't, can we, we? I think we can just amend it, say that it's just for the zoo only.
Let's vote on what we have, if it has to come back or be amended. Because with Jake not here, I can't speak to what his intentions were. It was, the night we talked about it, it was for the zoo. But if he's got other projects for him, do we really want to limit them?
Hold on. Matt's first.
I'm just in agreement to keep it somewhat simple and say it's for the zoo, but it's also they can be used for other projects around the city when needed. I'm open for that.
Sherry?
I just, like I said, I'm not against this. It just, if, if it was talked about that it was for the zoo, why wasn't it in here for the zoo? But I mean, if it's not just for the zoo, it's for other things in the community, I'm fine with that. But everyone kept saying it was for the zoo, and it's, it just, to me, the, the job description should match what we're talking about, and it didn't. So that's just, I have a problem with that. But I mean, if it's for the city, but I mean, have, now someone, we had someone talk tonight saying that there could be a group that would do this. So how much research was done on it, that we've tried to find people to do it? Or, I mean, I know time is the essence, because it is May, that we're not just rushing in it just because we want to do this. That's just what my thought process was. Thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, well, in my recollection is, and I guess at least right now I'm going to vote for it, and as I did at, at the committee, but my recollection, it's, it's for the zoo. And that's, so that, that's what my vote will be going for. Because that, that, that was, that was my understanding of it anyway.
Is Jake on Zoom? Jake's on Zoom. Jake? Are you there?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, cool.
Speak your thoughts.
I just, I just joined in, so I just thought the last twenty seconds, I think Tom and Sherry were talking about the usage of the seasonal gardeners.
That's correct.
Okay. We brought this up just because last year we tried to manage all the gardens at the zoo. And without the master gardener program anymore, it's either we take out sections of landscape areas and flower beds, because we as, our staff, we can't keep up with the zoo, Veterans Park, the Aquatic Center, Demis Park. I could go on and on about other different areas that we have to maintain. So adding two people to work fifteen hours a week, ten dollars and fifty cents, it fit into this year's budget. So that's pretty much where the thought process came.
Does that answer your questions?
Yes, thank you, Jake. I was, because it didn't state how many hours either, unless I missed it, so that's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it can be, I mean, it can be roughly, depending on when this passes, depending on when we get people to apply. We're, we're guesstimating roughly, a season about twelve, twelve weeks that this will go on, so thirty hours, thirty hours a week at ten fifty came out to, I think it was like thirty-seven hundred dollars for, for the, for these gardeners.
Thank you, Jake.
Yep.
It is. Okay. Any further questions? Go ahead.
Sorry, I just have one. So even though this is seasonal, so there was a, a formality that went through with the HR committee, saying what the budget was and everything else was good through the finance and everything else, like it was budgeted for.
Is that, I wasn't at the meeting, Jay.
Oh, Tim. From a budget standpoint, you know, each year we put into the budget an estimated number of positions at a, at a rate for how many hours. And from my understanding is that with all the summer help, that this is within that original summer help budget.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? We're almost there. Seeing no further comments? Please cast your ballots. Maybe Tyler, do you have a cord? We have a laptop dying over here. That motion carried seven As, one abstention. Oh, we got item D, which is the Human Resource Committee held May seventeenth, being tonight.
Thank you again, Mayor. Human Resources met Tuesday, May seventeenth at five-thirty PM. All members were present. List of others in attendance is in the clerk's office. Item number one, call the meeting to order at five-thirty PM. Item number two, discuss and consider for approval of changes to the seasonal LTE pay rates. There was a motion by Bemke, seconded by Delaney, to approve the pay rates for the seasonal LTEs as follows. LTEs possessing a valid CDL would receive eighty percent of the hourly rate of common labor. LTEs not possessing a valid CDL receive seventy-five percent of the hourly rate of common labor. Motion carried three zero. Item number three was adjournment. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Raome, to adjourn. Motion carried, meaning adjourned at five-thirty-four. They make a motion to approve the Human Resource Committee minutes.
Unless somebody beats you. He got seconded. Motion is, motion by Sherry, seconded by Matt. Is there any discussion on the item? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. We're on to item ten, which is reports of other committees, commission boards, and department reports. Any questions, comments, what's your wishes? Hey, we got a motion by Jay. And a second by Matt. Any questions, comments? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Welcome back, Mike. That motion carried seven As and one abstention. We're on to item eleven, referral to committees. Go ahead, Sherry.
Okay, and Sue can tell me to shut up if I'm not, if it's not appropriate. But I'm just not sure who I could send these referrals to. We do get monthly update reports from wastewater, water and light, streets, engineering, you know, Public Works, planning commission, police, fire, ordinance, officer, and housing authority, because they have commissions or committees that oversee, some oversee them. Some are very in-depth, just like our packet, that tell us exactly what the committee or the department's been going through as far as what they've done for the month. But I, you know, like for HR, there's just some things that it would be nice to see just besides agenda items, you know, like how many job openings there are, how many positions have been filled, how many terminations voluntary, you know, how many applications were received for each position, you know, and updates, like with the training and those kinds of things. If we had monthly reports that kind of just, like I said, not to micromanage, but just to see what, you know, what those situations were. So I don't know, I mean, that maybe could go to the HR referral, but, you know, like IT, they don't have per se an oversight committee, except if they're asking for money for finance. But, you know, it'd be, you know, informative to find out, you know, servers or what kind of security training the employees are going through. Obviously hackers are on the rise. You know, what projects they're working with. Are they working with, like, the Aquatic Center, trying to get, you know, some of the stuff that the Park and Commission were doing? You know, and another thing, Mr. Mayor, I think too, not that we tell you what to do, but I just, I know a lot of people ask, you know, well, what does the mayor do all, you know, what kind of things they're involved in? You know, enlightening the community and citizens to have some insight into what, you know, great things they can expect from the mayor's office. You know, what kind of things are you working on to bring things here? So, you know, the leader of the government, the citizens, and we as council members, you know, transparency is best, and it would just be enlightened, just to hear from different departments, just to see what's going on, on a monthly basis, not to micromanage, but just so that we're aware of, oh, because if they're not listed on the agenda, we can't talk about it. So it's just those kinds of things, but I'm not sure where to send those referrals to, or what the process would be. Thanks.
I think Jennifer had referred, or given me the one referral regarding, and I guess I would just call it expectations of departments and department heads regarding communication with council and reports. And I was going to have it be on legislative, but HR, I guess, could, it could be an HR thing. I guess I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, but we can definitely put that on, on an agenda just to talk about. I don't, I know one of your referrals said to actually have department heads report to committees, like have a, as for an oversight, is that, or was that more just, is it more about the reports, doing the reports?
Just to see kind of what's going on. Like I said, if I can't, I mean, yes, I can call IT, I could call you and talk about things, but I'm sure that, you know, if I have a question, there's probably other people instead of the department head getting the same runaround in, not runaround, I don't mean it that way, but it's informative for the citizens and for all of us to.
But you're talking simply about the department heads giving a report at council time, not, because I thought one of the referrals was having department heads report to a committee, like.
Well, right, like I said, like IT, I mean, I know they go, you know, they, the mayor, they go to the mayor, but as far as, you know, if it was a money-based thing, it would go to finance or, you know, and legislative or things like that. But just. But just those kinds of things, because it's nice to know, like I said, it's not to micromanage, but it's, if there's things that, like what projects they're working on, if we had questions, or maybe there's things that we could think of to help, you know, the city as a whole, but we, we can't if it's not anywhere.
Right. And I, and when I say report, I meant like have a reporting and oversight relationship with each department had that with a committee, but that isn't what you're, you're, you're talking about more just giving a communication, a report to the council at the end of the meeting or as part of the meeting?
As part of the meeting. I'd like, I'd like to see that, because I know, you know, a lot of times, some committees don't have those attachments either. They're always handed out at council. Well, if you're not there and you're watching it, you know, I mean, sometimes you can't talk about it, because you don't know what they're seeing. So, it's just, I want more transparency that way, and just as a benefit, not a negative. Thank you.
Uh, Matt?
I just want to voice my support with everything you just said, Sherry. I think those are great ideas. We're all, most of us, working day jobs, and you just don't find the time to be able to ask the questions you want to ask, so I think it's great. And any way you can get the Legislative Committee more active, I think that that's great also. I think that it serves a broader purpose, so if we can utilize them more, then we should do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Go ahead, Sherry.
Just to kind of go off of what Matt was saying, I mean, I know, like, I.T. doesn't have an oversight committee. You know, they, they talk to the mayor, but...
That's how our system's set up.
Right.
We're not a county system.
Right, and that's not what I'm trying to get at at all, but it's just like, sometimes it's nice if a, if a, if a department has some issues or something like that, speaking as a group, as a committee, sometimes is more helpful as well. So, that's just a thought, too.
And a lot of times, what they're working on is what you've approved in the budget process. That's usually what they're working on. Any other referrals? Well, I guess, information at council referrals follow up to Jennifer. You don't have any, do you? Nope. Okay. Seeing none, we're on to item 12, which is adjournment. Right. We have a motion by Jay, seconded by Matt. Any, well, there's no discussion on that. Please cast your ballots to adjourn. Motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Have a good night.